Planning Board Meeting Thursday, March 2nd, 2023. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 6th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Store Ledger. Second, on January 6th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 6th, 2023, said notice was posted in the Office of the Planning Board and on the Bulletin Board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Cristiano?
You're muted, Joe.
Still muted. Thank you. Mr. Greenfield's been excused. Mr. Husser?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggio has been excused. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Ms. Talente's been excused. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Council Engager's been excused. Mr. Kyle?
Present.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
And Chairman Bivai?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, fantastic. All right, can we stand for the pledge of the flag and then a moment of silence for our troops serving while I'm abroad? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get started, I just want to address something really quick. So come May 11th, the federal government intends to end the COVID-19 national and public health emergency. So I spoke with the board professionals and the administration, Mr. Clark. And as of June 1st, the planning board will be going back to in-person meetings. This will give the board members, the professionals, the administration ample time to prepare for the in-person meetings. Although the Zoom meetings have been working better than anyone's anticipation, it's always been our intention to go back in person once the federal and state government deemed it safe. I want to thank all the members, the professionals, or administration, the applicants, and the public for doing everything humanly possible to keep us all safe. So come June 1st, every meeting will now be in person. So get that out of the way.
Thank you.
So first up is the approval of minutes for the special meeting, November 29th, 2022. Eligible voters today are Cristiano and Tannenhouse.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That was easy. The next set is for January 19th, 23. Eligible voters Cristiano, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Kyle, Mr. Mercer, and myself. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Bivai?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Any correspondence?
Yes, actually, on the agenda for tonight, we have case number SP 1105 AAVRHW, Property LLC, which is on Victory Road. On the agenda, I put that it was going to be carried to March 16th with no further notice. I've also received a letter from Mr. Simon, the attorney for the applicant, and he's asked that it be rescheduled to April 13th with no further notice. And he's given the board an extension of time through April 13th. So I'm going to leave it on the 16th agenda with another note that it's carried for any member of the public who's not here. But if we could at least carry it on the record to April 13th, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Karp, do you want to carry that for us?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, the case number SP 1105 AAVRHW, Property LLC, Victory Road is being carried to March 16th, 2023. If anyone is present who for that application, please be advised that it's not being heard tonight. It has been carried to March 16th, 2023, at which time I would expect that it will be further carried to April 13th. But you may want to check in on March 16th, just if you want to be present for the hearing or want to make comments on it.
Thank you, and that will be a virtual meeting.
Yeah.
And that's all the correspondence I have.
All righty. All right, so next up, submission waivers. Case number SD 3007, Avett Brothers, and it's a minor subdivision.
That's Mr. Cohen's case. I'm bringing him in.
Chairman?
Yes.
I will be recusing myself from this application. And in preparation, are we moving on to the next application for AASTHW Property LLC?
Yes.
Yeah, I need to recuse myself for that one as well.
Okay.
If someone could text me when you get to Victory Road.
We're not here in Victory Road tonight.
Getting carried.
Victory, New Horizon.
Okay, I'll shoot you a text.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye. All righty.
You're up, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, sorry, it's hard to hear.
That's okay.
Todd Cohen for Avett Brothers LLC. Now, we have a submission waiver hearing on this evening. I spoke with Laura regarding that earlier today, and I think we're in agreement regarding a couple of submission waivers.
Mr. Hart, if you could just swear me in, I can jump through everything.
Perfect. Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give in this matter and any other matters? It shall be the truth unto penalties of perjury.
I do.
Thank you.
So Mr. Cohen, members of the board, in addition to January 20th, 2023 review letter, the submission waivers are specifically outlined in item number three. As Mr. Cohen indicated, I have the opportunity to speak earlier today. We will be providing all of the items with the exception of item 17, which is description including me coming down, and checklist item 60, overland drainage within 2,000 feet of the site. Because this is a minor subdivision, I take no exception to the granting of those waivers. And if any easements are such as required as a result of this subdivision, descriptions would be provided post-approval. So with that, I take no exception to the granting of those waiver, understanding that the bounds will be provided.
Okay. Board have any comments? Okay. Then I guess I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Huster?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Bivai?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Good night. All right, next up, case number SP 1102, AASTHW Property LLC, Stavola, preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance relief.
Eileen, if you could, Kevin Chen from my office is in the audience's traffic.
Yes, I'm bringing him in, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Giannetti, who do you need? I have Paul Latham, Sean Nager.
Paul Latham, Sean Nager, Jeremy Lang, Dan DiSario, Tongto Lam, and I guess Christine Caphone. I guess we'll have our whole team. Not necessarily everyone's going to be testifying.
And you have a stenographer, correct?
Yes.
I'll bring her in too, just in case.
Yeah.
They should all be in then.
Great, so good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Craig Giannetti, the law firm, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, AASTHW Property LLC. This is an application for preliminary final major site plan approval. Property located at 308 and 413 Fairfield Road, block 168, lots 17, 18, 1902, 19.04, and 19.08. Property is located in the SED Special Economic Development Zone. The property is approximately 11.84 acres. It's mostly vacant. The applicant proposes to remove the existing two-story frame building and sheds and pavement. I'm sorry, I'm hearing a lot of feedback.
Yeah, somebody has their...
I think it's Mr. Chen, if he can maybe mute himself.
Oh, sorry.
Not a problem. Thank you. And so we're removing the existing buildings on the property and proposing an approximately 202,000 square foot warehouse, which includes approximately 10,000 square feet of office space. The applicant's also proposing to consolidate all the lots to create a single tax lot as part of any approval. Access being proposed to the site with two full movement driveways along Fairfield Road. As you'll hear tonight, the application as being presented is conforming to the town's zoning ordinance. And there's a couple items identified in some of the board professional review letters we received, which we'll provide some testimony on. One, which we've dealt with before, a provision of the ordinance, section 188, 106A, which provides for the board being able to approve driveway widths in excess of 24 feet. But then there's a separate other provision of the ordinance that specifically requires for an industrial use, a minimum driveway width of 30 feet, and we are proposing driveway widths of 30 feet and 35 feet. In addition, you'll hear some of the other, I guess waivers being sought in connection with the tree replacement and the payment thereof, as well as a lighting plan that is in performance with your ordinance, as well as an alternative lighting plan that we feel is more appropriate for the site and conforms with the IES standards. We have here with us this evening Jeremy Lang from the applicant, who providing operational testimony and a general overview of the site plan. We also have Tongto Lam of Boulder Engineering to testify as to civil engineering, Dan DiSario as to traffic engineering as well, and to the extent necessary, our plan is available also. With that, unless there's any questions for me, I'd like to start with our first witness, Jeremy Lang.
Sure.
Jeremy?
Yep, just waiting to get my camera to go on. Here we go. Good evening, Jeremy Lang.
You're on mute, Mr. Karp. I think, Mr. Karp, are you trying to swear him in?
Yes, please. Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give in this matter, it shall be the truth unto penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address.
It's Jeremy Lang, L-A-N-G-E, 5144 West Hurley Pond Road, Wall, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Lang, though, we're not offering you as an expert as part of the application. If you can just please provide your position with the applicant, as well as your background in development in general.
Certainly. Good evening again, Jeremy Lang. I'm the Director of Development for Active Acquisitions. The applicant this evening is an affiliated entity of Active Acquisitions. My background is that of a professional civil engineer and professional planner, where I've been working in that capacity for 28 years. The last two and a half years, I've been at Active Acquisitions as the Director of Development. So it's that capacity I'll be testifying this evening. So you've already heard about the property location, so I'm not going to repeat all that. Property is essentially vacant but for the one single family home. The only reason that's significant from an environmental standpoint, as summarized in Exhibit A 34, there is no further investigation on any of the environmental AOCs or RECs, with the exception of a 275-gallon above-ground storage tank that is currently serving that development. So at the time of construction or demolition, as really the case would be, that will certainly be addressed in accordance with all applicable laws. But save that, there are no environmental issues on the site as identified in Exhibit A 34. You've heard that proposal this evening is for a warehouse for just over 200,000 square feet. A couple important notes about that. We have 73 passenger vehicle parking stalls, which includes two electric vehicle stalls, and there are 25 loading docks associated with that. In terms of the use, I want to be real clear. This is not a major distribution center. It's not a fulfillment center. It's not a last-mile distribution center. What I do want to just spend a second clarifying for you is the difference between warehouse and distribution. Warehouse is when the primary use is storage and distribution is a secondary use. Where a distribution warehouse, it's the exact opposite. It's the primary. Is distribution and storage is kind of the ancillary or secondary use. In this case, the reason that the site is going to be warehouse, not just because I'm telling you, but because it's actually designed to be warehouse, there's several things. One, it's just first location. It's in an excellent location. We're right off the interchange, literally next to the interchange of Route 33. However, we are over five miles from the turnpike, exit 16 in particular. And in being that distance from the turnpike, that lends itself more to a user that is storage-based as opposed to distribution-based. Those that have a real distribution focus want to be a little closer than that to the turnpike and other interstate-type highways like that. Another big thing is the velocity which goods move through the warehouse. A cross-dock facility will move goods much faster. This is not a cross-dock facility. This is what we call a single-load facility. So again, that's much more in line with the storage use, because you have fewer bays and are only on the one side. So much more consistent with that. Next, it's a small building. It's only about 200,000 square feet. Typically, a distribution-type use is 500,000 plus to be in a distribution category, so we're nowhere near that, well under half. Another thing is to move goods fast, to be distribution, takes a lot more people. We do not have the requisite number of parking here for a high manpower operation. So it's much more consistent with storage type of use. We're just at our maximum shift to be 60, 65 people. It's just not sufficient parking under the ordinance standard to support the distribution use. So all that to say, this site is inherently a warehouse use. Our traffic engineer will talk a little bit more about what that means in terms of traffic, so I'm not going to go into that at all. From an operational standpoint, the building is set up to be divisible. It's up to two different tenants. Those tenants would be no less than 5,000 square feet, so it is fully conforming with your ordinance. Site is well buffered from both 33 and from Fairfield Road. We are buffering the truck court from our neighboring use to the south, although that is another warehouse facility, as you can see here on Exhibit A 23. Any incidental flammable or hazardous materials, which would be clean supplies, things like that, will be handled, stored in accordance with all applicable local and state requirements, federal requirements as well. As I noted, the site is next to the Route 33 interchange. We do have full movement access, both from the north side, from a car perspective, and on the south side, from a truck perspective. The driveway here on the north side is 30 feet. And that continues then from there. It goes north all the way around the building, through the truck court, and back out the driveway on the south. That is a 36-foot-wide driveway leading from the truck area. An important thing to note, the rear driveway here, that's along the Westerly property line, while we have that at a full 30 feet and it's full two-way traffic, that is not intended to be a circulation route that will have some kind of chain across it or gate, something like that with a Knox box. It's really meant for fire and emergency services. So, you know, employees' guests would be all on the left side or north side, and then the trucks would all be on the opposite side, the left side, where the truck court is. In terms of the driveway width, there's two ordinance sections that are applicable. It could be applicable. 188-106A requires driveways over 24 feet to be approved by the board. So we're here this evening for that. And then when it comes to specifically commercial and/or industrial uses, the main driveways have to be a minimum of 30 feet. All the main driveways, as I've just described, we're fully compliant with that. So we don't believe there's any driveway relief required at all. In terms of the trucks on the site, as I mentioned, the trucks will come in that 36-foot-wide driveway. We have provided a turnaround at the southwest corner. So the trucks would come in, they would rotate around, that would get them in the right orientation to pull into the truck dock. They would back in, load, unload, whatever they're doing, and then pull back out to Fairfield Road. And you can see even in the picture frame here, you can see Route 33, where the trucks will be headed to eventually get to the interstate system or wherever they're headed to. In terms of refuse and recycling, that will be handled in the truck court area. There would be compactor-fed units there that would be internally fed. They're fully enclosed, and they will be in the truck court area, so they are not visible really from outside of the site. So there are four issues I want to go over with the board this evening, so I'm just going to jump right into those. The first has to do with lighting. Our base lighting plan is fully compliant with the ordinance. However, we have provided an alternate lighting plan that is fully compliant with the Illuminating Engineering Society standards, and that alternate plan is Exhibit A 19. Our kind of base or ordinance-compliant plan is Exhibit A 3. It's up to the board. We would slightly prefer the IES standards, but we really don't care. We will build the lighting either way, fully compliant with the ordinance or fully compliant with the Illuminating Engineering Society standards. If we're going to go with the latter, the IES standards, that would require a waiver from your ordinance. So the board would have to make a decision which way we're going. We're going to comply unless the board requests us to deviate to the IES standards. Next issue has to do with landscaping in front of the loading docks. Now, this is the truck docks, again, on the south side of the building. Now, we are proposing landscaping beds in that area to comply with ordinance 188-106G. I believe that's highly unusual to do that. I would submit to you that this is the back of the building, that it faces the adjacent Rock Solid Warehouse, that really only truck drivers backing into these stalls are going to see it. It's not visible from Fairfield Road. And I think it would, you know, create, it's one impractical, and I think would create a hardship from a maintenance standpoint to do that. So I would recommend to the board that this should be a waiver. But again, we will put them in if the board would prefer that. If not, we're happy to seek the waiver. Third issue has to do with trees. The site is primarily wooded, as you can see on Arrow Exhibit A 24. So any, you know, larger-scale development that's consistent with the ordinance, and we are here, we're consistent fully with the use, we're consistent fully with the bulk standards, is going to necessitate some kind of tree waiver, because you simply can't put this number of trees back on the site. So we are proposing to do a contribution to the Township's tree fund. Both our engineer, as well as your engineer, have calculated that amount to be $97,650. And I will stipulate on behalf of the applicant that we are prepared to make that contribution in lieu of fully meeting the tree ordinance. The final thing has to do with the building facades. We have two separate building facades here. One is literally conforming with the ordinance. The other, I think, may be described as complying with the ordinance intent. So we're putting both of those up on the screen here right now. And then, Paul, can we get a little more focus away from the office? Yeah, there you go. Thank you. So the one on the left is Exhibit A 12. That is the one that we would more typically go with. We believe that fully complies with the intent of the ordinance. The one on the right is Exhibit A 33. That complies with the ordinance more literally. It's my opinion that, from practical standpoint, that the ordinance is probably intended for smaller-scale commercial buildings. It wasn't really, probably wasn't envisioning warehousing when it was written. So I think the one on the left is far more conforming with the ordinance intent, but we are happy to build either one. You know, we will take the board's guidance and either the one on the left, which is A 12, the one on the right, which is A 33. Happy to do either one. We would prefer the one on the left, A 12, but happy to do others. It's completely to the board's decision. So with that, Craig, that concludes my direct testimony.
Great, and so our next witness is our civil engineer, Tongto Lam.
Craig, can I just interject?
Sure.
For a minute on those waivers, because I know that, you know, that's of concern. If I could just, Mr. Chair, at your discretion, if I could just discuss that briefly. So the waiver that they've requested to pay into the tree fund is a waiver that we see on pretty regularly. And unless Laura has any objection, I would take no exception. And I feel like the testimony that was provided, you know, meets the intent and the burden in terms of what exactly is being proposed. And it is a very typical waiver that we grant in order for them to pay into our tree fund. Talking about the lighting, again, I also would say that we have consistently required applicants to comply with the IES standards, which Mr. Lang testified to, as opposed to our ordinance standard. I think we've granted waivers from our ordinance standard in almost every application that we've seen, and that the IES is a standard that, and Brian, I know this is, oh, Brian's not here, but that's a standard that Brian typically accepts and Shari also recommends. I will say that it has been recommended that the township review its ordinance standards and accept those IES standards as being acceptable. The foundation landscaping waiver, and I think, Mr. Lang, and if I'm incorrect, you can correct me, is that you're asking for the waiver along the facade that has the loading docks to put the foundation plantings underneath the loading docks. If they don't, if the board is not interested in that, you would be willing to put the plantings in, but you feel it's a more practical alternative to ask for the waiver, and I would agree. The plantings underneath the loading docks are not going to survive. They're going to die. The plantings underneath the loading docks are not going to survive. They're going to die. So. I understand the intent of the ordinance is to have something aesthetic around the perimeter of the building, but those loading docks face the back of the other warehouse. They're not visible from the street. I would take no exception to that request. And similarly, on the architecture. You know, they have worked very closely with my office on this architecture, and I know they're looking to comply and they have an architectural design, which was. What is it? A thirteen, Jeremy? Was that the, or A three, A three?
Let me get the right numbers here. It is A twelve is the one that is the.
Right, that's the one, but the compliant one is A three?
A thirty-three, sorry.
Okay, sorry. So I would submit to the board that I think the, what they're proposing in A twelve. Is a preferable design. I know it's not fully conforming, but I think it's a little bit more aesthetically interesting. It's not as flat. And even though it's not a hundred percent compliant, I think it's a superior architectural design than the compliant design. All that being said, I think the testimony that's been provided here to give you the options, obviously, it's ultimately your decision, but from my professional opinion. The testimony that's been provided is more than adequate, in my opinion, to meet the burden of a waiver. Let's be clear, these are waivers, they're not variances, these are waivers. And that I would agree and take no exception to the waivers that have been requested and feel that the applicants met its burden. But again, I put it back to you.
And as I mentioned, our next witness is our civil engineer, Tong Tuo Lam, who. Will kind of continue on Jeremy's testimony, which provide a lot of the kind of site description and T will get, or Tong Tuo will get into some of the more. finer details, particularly stormwater management and things of that nature. So I can call Mr. Lam up.
Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address.
First name is Tong Tuo, T U N G hyphen T O, last name Lam, L A M. For the firm Bowler, B O H L E R, address is thirty, Independence Boulevard, Suite two hundred and one, New Jersey, oh seven oh five nine.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Lam. If you could just please provide for the board your experience qualifications and licenses in the field of civil engineering?
Yes, I'm a two thousand and four graduate from Los Angeles Institute of Technology. We're for Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering pack. I'm a PhD candidate at Rutgers for civil environmental engineering. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Are your licenses current?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And you've been accepted as an expert? Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Mr. Land, the, the plans in the, in the exhibits with Bowler on it. Were prepared by you or someone under your direction in connection with this application?
Yes.
And as a whole, the, the site plan is being presented, other than what's been testified to as to Mr. Lang. Conform to the, the Balkan zone standard of the S C D zone.
Correct.
And. Maybe if you can start with stormwater management, if you can just provide some testimony. As to how the stormwater is working here in compliance with the state and local regulation.
Yes, stormwater for this project is being captured with onsite inlets and trench range. As you're being piped to either the above ground or underground filtration basins or bio retention basins. They're located throughout the site and it complies with their N J D E P requirements for small scale.
And. The, I guess, again, they tend, they comply with the D E P regulations and township regulations concerning stormwater management.
Correct.
And there'll be an operations and maintenance manual that's recorded. You know, as part of this project concerning the maintenance of the stormwater management.
Yes.
And who will own that system?
As we privately own.
And can you discuss water and sewer, how that's going to be serving the site?
Public water and public sewer available within their Fairfield Row frontage.
And what about fire suppression?
For fire suppression, there'll be a fire tank located on site. Where the mouse is right now, exhibit A twenty-three is up on the screen right now. That fire tank is a hundred forty thousand gallons fire tank. It's the diameter is thirty-six feet. Has a height of twenty-five feet. And then right in front of it, a small rectangle, which is representing the pump house. That is a twenty by twenty-four structure at a height of less than twenty-five feet. And it's located to the north of the proposed warehouse. There's their fire tank and the pump house.
And how about sanitary sewer?
Sanitary sewer is service being routed through their Fairfield Row frontage and collected into a public. Sanitary sewer, main.
And the signage for the site and, or, you know, pre-standing signage?
There's one freestanding sign shown on A twenty-three right along the passenger vehicle entrance. It's fully compliance, nine feet, one Y, three feet in height for the sign area.
We'll save kind of the circulation and traffic for our traffic engineer. But with respect to, I guess, other outside agency approvals, if you can just provide a summary of that.
We have county planning board approval. We also have free whole soil conservation district certification. The water service being under review by New Jersey American Water. The sewer is being reviewed under by how township and then D E P, we received their general permit to G P six to fill the onsite wetland.
And you've had an opportunity to review the board engineer's review letter dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three from C M E Associates?
Yes.
And with respect to the engineering items in there, are you able to comply with all of those and address them as part of any plan revisions or post approvals?
Yes, we will.
And if you an opportunity to review the board planners review letter dated February twenty. There, also February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
And from an, for the engineering items, will be able to comply with all of those items. As part of any plan revisions and any conditions of approval?
Correct.
So that's all I have, the direct presentation of. Let me take a step back. So there was also a fire bureau review letter that had a couple of comments. We'll be able to address those comments as well.
Yes, we'll paint their fire hydrant and we'll coordinate with their fiber for the fire lane.
And again, that's all I have, a direct testimony of Mr. Lam. We do have our traffic. Engineer that'll get into more of the, the circulation concerning the site. And his traffic study. Mr. Disario.
I am here.
Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give in this manner, shall be the truth under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address.
Certainly. My name is Dan. Last name is Disario, D I S A R I O. I work for Lang and Engineering and Environmental Services, and we are located in Princeton, New Jersey.
Mr. Disario, if you can just please provide for the board your experience qualifications and licenses in the field of traffic engineering?
Certainly, Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Temple University. Master of Science in Transportation Engineering from N J I T. Licensed professional engineer in a state of New Jersey, as well as several other states. And I've been accepted as an expert in the field of traffic engineering before hundreds of boards. Throughout New Jersey, including this one.
Is your license current?
It is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Disario, and did you or someone in the direction prepare a traffic impact study as part or traffic impact assessment as part of this application?
Yes, and that report's entitled Traffic Impact Study dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
And can you just kind of give a summary of, you know, what you studied and your conclusions as part of that traffic assessment?
Certainly, if the board at the appropriate time has any questions regarding that traffic study, I would be happy to answer them. And I'm going to give the board the benefit of overall highlights of that study. As you heard from Mr. Lang, the building that's proposed before the board this evening. Is what I would characterize as a small warehouse building. Based on my experience, generally speaking, when you're less than four hundred fifty thousand square feet. You're certainly considered a small warehouse building. The board can take comfort. As well, knowing that there is a limited parking supply in terms of only seventy-three parking spaces. So the types of tenants that are likely going to occupy this building. Will have relatively speaking, low operations, particularly with respect to the traffic that they would generate. To estimate the traffic for this proposed building, we did rely on published rates. Those are published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the Trip Generation Manual. And we specifically use the rates for land use code one fifty warehousing. For the building size that is proposed. We would estimate, again, based on those published rates during a morning peak hour, so one hour between seven. To nine in the morning, thirty-seven vehicles would enter, seventeen vehicles would exit for a total two-way volume of fifty-four trips. Of those, two trucks would come in and two trucks would go out for a total truck two-way trips of four. In the P M peak hour, similarly, one hour between four and six in the afternoon and evening. Thirteen vehicles would come in, forty-three would exit for a total two-way volume of fifty-six. And of those, three trucks would come in and three trucks would go out during that weekday evening peak hour. I would respectfully submit to this board that. Many jurisdictions, including the New Jersey Department of Transportation, consider any land uses that generate less than a hundred peak hour trips. During any peak hour are not considered high traffic generators and are not considered significant. Or they don't consider those types of low traffic generators having significant impacts on area traffic operations. And certainly that is the case with this proposed warehouse before you this evening, as detailed in our traffic study. Moving to the driveways that are proposed as part of this project in terms of their locations. Site distance that is available for those proposed locations, for all intents and purposes, is unlimited. Fairfield Road is generally flat and straight along the site fronteds and beyond the site fronted. So site distance is, is essentially unlimited and certainly adequate for the driveway locations. As you heard earlier, we are seeking driveway widths that are a minimum of thirty feet. Consistent with your ordinance requirements for the type of use that the warehouse is. In conjunction with those widths, the driveway designs themselves are appropriate. And consistent with your ordinance requirements and will allow vehicles to enter and exit the site. Both safely and efficiently. As the boards are aware, the way the site's been laid out, cars and trucks are going to be segregated. Cars will use. The norally site driveway and will be physically separated from the truck court, which is going to be on the south side of the site. So cars will have their own driveway with which to enter and exit the site. And trucks will have their own driveway with which to enter and exit the site. Those driveways, again, will operate safely and efficiently. And certainly that is borne out by the analysis as detailed in our traffic impact study. Both the car parking areas as well as the truck court. Dimensionally have been designed in accordance with your ordinance requirements. As well as common design standards and will allow cars and trucks to safely and efficiently circulate. In their respective areas within the site itself. And finally, I would conclude with what you heard earlier from Jeremy. There is a turnaround area in the truck court. I refer to that as a spin circle, but it's intended to allow truck drivers as they come in that subtly driveway. They're circulating as it relates to the docks in the least preferred direction. So the spin circle will allow them to go up to that corner of the site, spin around. And then come back towards the loading docks in the correct orientation for them to then back into the loading docks. So I certainly think it's a advantageous feature as part of the site design. And certainly I endorse it and think the truck drivers will benefit from having that spin circle available to them. And with that, I conclude my testimony.
And I guess along those lines, have you seen those type of spin circles used on other industrial type of applications?
Yes, they are very common.
And that's all I have, a direct presentation of Mr. Disario, and we don't have any further witnesses from a direct presentation. I noted we had our planner available. But again, based upon the testimony of Mr. Lang and our other witnesses, there are no variances being proposed. And the waivers, we are seeking that we think are better proposals. We have alternative plans that are fully conforming. And if the board so desires, could go with that. Any questions to the board or the professionals?
As you say, anybody from the board have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Mr. Lam mentioned something about, you know, filling in wetlands. And I, I would just like a little more information about that, like, you know, to what extent, where are they and why?
I guess either Jeremy or.
That, that was, I mean, Mr. Lam.
Oh, oh, I thought you said Lang, sorry.
Um, there's a little leftover pockets of isolated wetland just from poor drainage. When it was a former activity on the site. It's deemed to be an isolated wetland and qualified under general permit requirement. And we have the proper D E P approval for it.
Perfect, thank you. Just wanted a little clarification. So I appreciate that.
Hey, Paul, I got a question.
Shoot.
I'm reviewing Mellett Kelly, G Z A. There's September twenty twenty-one site investigation report. And I just want some clarification on this. And I see Mr. Lev is in the audience here, who is the L S R P that signed off on this, this document. They took some, some soil samples. They did a test pit and they had a hit of arsenic, which is above the N J D P's residential and soil. Residential and non-residential soil remediation standard. And in this report, there's really no explanation other than they retested the sample. It was below, so magically that initial concentration goes away. Which I don't believe is correct. There's no clarification as to. What they, they plan on doing with that initial sample that did exceed a standard in the state of New Jersey.
I guess that's a question. For. Yeah, I guess we'll prepare to, is there a way to bring that person into the meeting?
Who is it?
Matt Lev.
Maybe we have Mr. Lev sworn in?
Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give in this matter tonight shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address.
Matthew Lev, last name L E V, be like Victor. And the address is one seventeen Canal Road in Southbound Brook, New Jersey, zero eight 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 zero.
And I guess, Mr. Lev, before we adjust our question, if you could just please provide your experience qualifications and licenses in the field. I guess of environmental consulting and or engineering.
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science degree from Rutgers University, and I'm a licensed site remediation professional.
Is your license current?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, we'll accept his credentials.
Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Lev, you've heard Board Member Hanzar's question as to your E I S and the. The tests that were performed, if you could just address that?
Sure. When we did our laboratory, when we got our laboratory results, we asked that the. Laboratory confirm the concentration that they had reported on the sample. And they reran the sample and they could not confirm a result above the remediation standard. So in our professional opinion, it did not exceed a standard.
So you ran a sample and exceeded, and because it exceeded, you ran it again, and it didn't exceed, so you're just taking that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Jen said that there was an area where the trees were definitely not going to survive. Is there any way you could just bring me up the map? And I just want to see exactly where that area is possibly?
It's the, yeah, I, so Jeremy or someone Craig on your team, can you bring up the site plan, please?
The color rendering site plan?
Yeah.
Paul, can you bring that up?
Yeah, Paul's gonna bring that up. He's doing it right now.
All right, perfect. So along, if you're looking at the screen on the left side where you see all those loading docks, can you put, can you put the cursor up and down on loading, where the loading dock?
Yeah, zoom in, yeah.
Yeah, right there. So basically, our ordinance requires foundation plantings around the entire perimeter, and they have some of it shown, right? But basically to plant like vegetation underneath where the trucks are going to be in and out, in and out, it will not survive. So I understand the intent, but I don't think when this was drafted, we were anticipating loading docks. They have indicated they will put it in. But I'm here to tell you, it's going to last like a couple of months, similar to like those diamond islands you find in like a shopping center where it looks all pretty for the first fifteen minutes. And then the landscaping dies and it becomes an ashtray. That's what this is going to become. It there, it will not survive. The trucks backing in, backing in. So I mean, if you want it, they're willing to put it in. I take no exception to the waiver because I really think it's impractical to put.
It's all those little green dots along the building.
They're elevated, right? So this is going to be underneath. So the trucks are going to back in and so that like on top of this. It's up to you guys. They'll do it if.
No, thank you. You answered my question. I just, yeah, I just want to know.
Yep, no problem.
Anybody else on the board? Okay. Um. All right, I guess we can open it up to the public, Eileen.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up to members of the public. Please use the raise your hand feature. I'll bring you in one at a time. You will need audio and video. You'll be sworn in and required to give your name and address. Thank you. Anyone calling in, press star nine to raise or lower your hand, star six to mute or unmute yourself. I have Mr. Parisi with his hand raised. He's coming in now.
Hello.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give this matter shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name and provide your address.
Mark Parisi, P A R I S I, Sioux Castle Court.
Please proceed.
Okay, so I could, could the applicant pull up the uh, natural or actually the environmental impact report?
The actual report itself?
Yeah, and go to page thirty-eight, please.
Paul, are you able to bring that up?
Paul's getting it now.
Could you repeat what page? Thirty-eight. Okay, so where it says that this document was created using the e- environmental resource inventory from two thousand eight, you see towards the bottom of the page. This is November two thousand eight environmental resource inventory.
Uh, for the, yeah, for the town.
Yes.
Yes, to see that.
Okay, th- the planning board had a environmental resource inventory done. That was uh, completed, I believe in February of two thousand twenty-one and then adopted by this planning board in September of two thousand twenty-one. Why did this? Why, why is your natural resource inventory relying on the old? Uh, or why is your, this document relying on the old environmental resource inventory and not the new one? This document that you submitted was submitted in November two thousand twenty-one, but the planning board had adopted and updated environmental resource inventory in September, just two months prior. So I mean, I would just respectfully object that, that this application needs that, needs to go back and rely upon the the current envi- the environmental resource inventory, not the old one.
So Mark, is there something specific to this site that's changed?
I don't know, but I haven't looked through both documents and compared, done a comparative analysis of the old E R I, the new E R I and their natural resource inventory. But I think that when, if, as it relates to this application, that I I I think we th- this board should ask that the applicant rely upon the current document, not the old document. And then allow the professionals, including yourself, to review that.
Maybe we can also pull in, uh, if you were able to pull in Tom Affenati from uh, E I S as well, who are from E Z A, who also worked on this.
Uh, you need to stop sharing for a minute. And I'm sorry, what was that name again?
Tom Affenati.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
You swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give this matter tonight shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please proceed. Well, please state your let, your name, spell your last name, provide your address. I'm sorry.
Uh, Thomas Offenord, A U F F as in Frank, E N O R D as in David E. Uh, Equal Sciences Incorporated, seventy-five Fleetwood Drive, Suite two fifty, Rockaway, New Jersey, zero seven eight six six.
Mr. Offenati, if you could just provide for the board your kind of experience and qualifications, uh, and environmental consulting?
Yeah, I um, I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in biology. Uh, I've been um, working as an environmental consultant for the past thirty-six years at Equal Sciences. Uh, currently a vice president. Um, I have uh, experience with um, many, many hundreds of property assessments uh, for, for wetlands, for threatened and dangerous species, for environmental impacts. Um. I I've been qualified as an expert at many boards in New Jersey, including in in Allentown, uh, Bloomfield, um, Berners Township, Reddington Township.
We'll, we'll accept your credentials.
All right, thank you.
So. Go ahead, Mr. Affenati.
Yeah, I wanted to address Mr. Parisi's uh, question. Um. I believe he's got a uh, an an older version of the E I R or the E I S. Um, it was revised on February fifteenth uh, of of two thousand twenty-two. That's, I hope that's the E I R that everybody has. And in that E I R, um, the two thousand twenty-one environmental resource, uh, it is, is um, referenced and was used uh, to prepare the document. So I think there's a little mix up on on maybe the uh, a previous version of the E I R.
Where is there reference to the two thousand twenty-one uh, E E I R in your natural resource inventory?
I'm looking at the environmental impact report.
Oh, the, excuse me, the environmental impacts report. Did that rely upon?
It's also on page thirty-eight.
So relied on what?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm gonna say, I think his testimony was the updated version did rely upon the most current version uh, of the Howell Township Environmental uh, inventory element.
And that's listed as one of the documents in, on page thirty-eight?
Yes, it is.
Can you pull that up?
Uh, I'll have to email it.
I guess in the end, Mr. Parisi's, as it, the testimony of the updated E I S did consider that it was identified in that. Uh, and I guess, Mr. Offenati, has there been any change or based upon uh, the updated version, was there any change in the uh, conclusion of the uh, environmental impact statement based upon using the uh, two thousand twenty-one Howell Township environmental inventory element?
Uh, no, there was no change in the um, in the conclusions.
Okay, I'm just, I'm looking.
Submitted, I I, to Mr. Parisi's point, was that submitted to the board because in looking at the documents that are available for review, I'm not finding it.
I don't have it on my list.
Right, so that's why I'm asking. That may have been done, which is great, but it's not part of it that like to Mr. Parisi's point, the only, there's only one E I S in the documents information that we have as part of the record. So when was it done? What was the date of the revision?
February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
And was it submitted to the board?
Uh, to my knowledge, it was.
I mean, I I guess I would defer to you counsel. I know you weren't the counsel at the time, so you know, in fairness, you may not know, but so what I would suggest, and I I'm I'm gonna de- defer to Mr. Karp, but at the end of the day, was there, so can you then describe to us what changes were done between the initial and the supplemental? Because clearly, we don't have it.
Yes, and and Jen, to your point, I'm looking at the document distribution sheet number four.
It's not on there yet.
Yeah, dated September, uh, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and I don't see any updated document that I.
No, he said twenty twenty-two, so it would have been a prior to that, but I went through all four of them and I only found the one that you were looking at. So can you walk us through what changes were made from the initial submission to what you submit, what was done in two thousand twenty-two?
Hmm. I don't think there was any substantive change. Um, I believe it was just a a matter of citing the wrong document in the original, uh, in the November two thousand twenty-two two thousand twenty-one um, document.
So there was no other changes made other than reviewing updated information and verifying that the information within the original document remained consistent?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Chair, I would leave that to you to decide how to handle it.
We're happy to provide it. Uh, obviously, you know, tomorrow, just so it's, the information is complete, but from a uh, testimony standpoint, un- unless Mr. Parisi has something from the two thousand twenty-one inventory that changes or or contradicts any of the conclusions uh, in the E I S, um. I think the testimony here is it was reviewed and updated to reflect that, and there was no change in the analysis or conclusions.
Well, just as a member of the public, you know, that has a concern about the environmental impact of these particular projects, I I would like to know that when, you know, a de- a developer is submitting a, an environmental impact statement, that they're relying upon the most current information that the, that the planning board itself has adopted as the standard for which these projects are to be, you know, uh, assessed and and.
And I think the testimony has been, Mr. Parisi, in all fairness, the testimony has been that there was a review, there's no substantive change to the documentation, unless you have something specific that you know. The testimony is they've reviewed the most recent, there's no substantive change to the documentation, and he stands behind the conclusions of his prior report, just updating the source material. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So I mean, as far as we're concerned, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, this went through the E, the Environmental Commission as well. So, Nick, I mean, do you have concerns about this or what what is happening?
I I, we, we have the same comment on our, on our uh, environmental sheet, so um.
Do we want to?
The testimony that nothing's changed other than a citation, it's on the record.
Do we want to? And you just make sure that.
It's submitted.
At some point tomorrow morning that 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 gets submitted to us.
So I would suggest, Mr. Chair, if, if, and this is a big if, I'm not opining one way or the other, if the board acts in the affirmative, I would make a condition of any approval that my office and Laura's office review the updated documentation. And if there are any changes related to this particular site, that there, then the applicant is going to have to come back and and address that issue on the record.
Yes.
That's fair.
Will the public have an opportunity to review that document prior to this board taking any action on this?
Once it becomes part of the record, it becomes, yes, it's a public document, yes.
And if there's any change, if 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 that report says anything different than the report, uh, the early report, then they will, the applicant will have to come back before the board.
And then you'll have an opportunity at that point, too, to have a comment about it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. You can also, you can remove me from the, as a panelist and keep me as an attendee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, uh, Eileen?
Yes, I have Mr. Chabra. There you go.
Uh, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give this matter shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
You're muted.
I don't think he muted. I think his audio, his microphone might not be working.
Eileen, this is the kid that's in Virginia from last week. I don't know how he keeps on getting to the meetings.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, he was talking about tennis courts in in Virginia.
Yeah.
We can't hear you. You have no audio.
I guess, when you say, should we move on?
Yeah, he has no audio. Yeah, you can remove him. Last time he came on, he didn't have any questions for any of the applicants, and it was more talking about playing tennis and stuff like Joe was saying, so um, being that his audio isn't working, I think it's safe to move on.
Okay. I have Candace Stovenero.
Hello? Oh, sorry. Hello?
Do you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give this matter tonight shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Absolutely.
Do you, please state your, please state your name, spell your name and provide us with your address.
Candace Stovenero, fifty-eight Victory Road, Hell, New Jersey, zero seven seven three one.
Please proceed.
Okay, my question is, so we have random people coming in on these meetings that are not in person. And I think that if we were in person, this would not happen. I do have a concern about the arsenic. study that miraculously disappeared. That does not go away. That is a poison. But if we were in person, which I am going to implore the board to.
So we already addressed that part, so this is about, you know, asking the questions of the, at the beginning of the meeting, we addressed it.
I know, Paul. You, you prefer to stay with the other.
Actually, that's not what we said. We addressed it. As of June first, we are back in person.
Awesome. I can't wait. But I would prefer that it would be sooner because we obviously are having problems.
So.
The arsenic study is my main concern. Thank you, sir, Chairman. So the arsenic study, is that going to be brushed under the carpet, or is that going to be revisited?
We can agree as a condition of approval to do an additional sample and run additional test. Clearly based upon it, they, there was something with it. They decided to run another test. It came back below. We'll have them run another sample, confirm the same, and submit the results to the board.
Thank you. That's all I needed. Thank you.
All right.
I have Janice Romasoukas. And I don't know why she's not coming into the meeting. There she goes now. I don't know where she went.
Is there another member of the public that has a hand up and maybe can come back to her?
I have no one with their hands up right now. I don't even see her on the meeting now.
Let's give her a let's give her a minute.
Now I have someone else.
Okay. So that'll give her some time to come back in.
This is P. Trotta.
Please unmute yourself.
It's, it's still on you.
Please unmute yourself. We can't proceed if you don't unmute yourself.
We can't hear you. You need to unmute.
If you touch your screen, there should then be a microphone button.
We cannot hear you. You're still muted. You have to unmute yourself.
There should be three dots up in the right-hand corner on your screen that you might be able to go to, to unmute yourself.
And a microphone in the bottom left-hand corner.
You're still muted.
We can't hear anything.
We see your lips moving. We just don't hear anything.
If you touch the screen of your phone, there's a microphone on the bottom that was, it's red with a line through it right now. Click it.
She looks frozen right now.
Yep.
Yeah.
Eileen, it looks like she's raising her hand again.
Yeah, I put her back in.
Thanks.
Hello?
Now we.
There we go.
Okay, I had, I had to, I had to go to my settings on my phone. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Not really technically savvy. My name is Patty Trotta.
One second, we need to screen you. Do you swear, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Please spell, state your name, spell your name, and provide us with your address.
Sure. Patty Trotta, T R O T T A. I live on one ninety Bennett Road, Freehold, New Jersey, zero seven seven two eight.
Please proceed.
Okay, I just had a question regarding traffic. So I live on Bennett Road between Van Devere and Fairfield, so I have the, the warehouse that was just built on Fairfield. You know, the, the buildings on Van Devere, and I had a question regarding, my, my street's not supposed to have tractor trailers or trucks of a certain size going up and down the road, so just wondering if that's going to be, you know, an issue with these buildings being put in.
Again, for the record, Dan DiSario, we anticipate all the trucks associated with this proposed warehouse building to be oriented to and from Route thirty-three. So I would not anticipate any trucks from any of the tenants that would occupy this building to go down Bennett Road.
Okay, that, that was just my only concern because I, I've lived here for the past fifteen years, and I, I will say that trucks do come down this road, even though they're not supposed to, so just have a concern that 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 is going to be upheld and, you know, monitored to ensure that, you know, because it is a residential street.
I think that may be also more of an enforcement issue.
Craig, is there any way you can communicate with the township to increase signage to that effect?
On Bennett Road?
Yes.
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 Perfect, thank you.
And on, on that point, I heard the word anticipate. Is there any restrictions of, of trucks coming out of the property? Are they all directed to Route thirty-three, or do they have the option to go away from Route thirty-three?
Paul, if you could call up the truck circulation exhibit, I believe as part of that exhibit, we are proposing no right turn signage at the truck driveway. So that trucks would not be allowed to make a right turn onto Fairfield and would have to make a left turn to head towards thirty-three.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm, I'm sorry, just for the record, I don't know what exhibit number was assigned to, to that exhibit.
A three, it's a three.
Truck turning plan.
And I mentioned signage. There is signage, like, currently here, but again, I, I guess it's more of an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
If, if trucks do start, if we start having more trucks than we've, you know, had in the past, that's just, that's my concern.
I still think they should coordinate with the town to make sure that the signs are, are enough, like, there's enough signage and it's adequate, and the worst thing that they can say is we have the signs up, right? So like, let's just have them coordinate and make sure, because I understand where you live, and I agree that it would be very difficult on your street, so, you know, have to make sure that they go the direction. I mean, I don't see the benefit of going that way, right, Dan? Like, that's your whole point, right? There's no benefit from them going that way, but I've seen everything, right? So let's just doubly check, and, and the applicant has already agreed to coordinate with Justin Yost in the township to make sure that we have all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted with that regard, because I, I do totally understand your concern.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That was my, that was my only question.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You have a nice night.
I'm going to try to bring Janice back in. I don't want my video.
There we go.
Sorry. I'm in a hotel in Florida, and it doesn't have good internet.
Do you, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Please spell your name and provide us with your address.
Janice, J A N I C E, Romasoukas, R O M I S O U K A S. I live on three fourteen Baker Road, which is right off of Fairfield. I have the concerns as one in front, the person in, in front of me about the traffic. The traffic has already increased dramatically on Fairfield Road that when you're down at the light on thirty-three, there's ten cars. I don't, which is going to block the driveway where this warehouse is. And when we're talking about the traffic, the traffic expert is talking about that warehouse. Let's face it, there's four propose, you know, besides the two, there's three more proposed warehouses on that road, and so if we're going to multiply, and they're bigger, so we have to multiply that by three or four to get the real traffic volume, and that's going to be on that road. The other concern I have is that our neighbor just went past that new warehouse that's being built on Fairfield, and it has for sale signs on the front of it already, just.
And there's one with the one on our side.
And I don't know. So my concern is the traffic. I'm really, I really don't see that it's being looked at in the true volume that's going to be there. And that is a major concern for me.
Hey, Mrs. Sario, if you can, with just elaborating connection with your traffic impact study, what was considered when you estimated the traffic volumes?
All the warehouses, not only the one before the board this evening, but the other warehouses that are either under construction or in a review process along Fairfield.
So in performing your analysis, these other warehouses were factored into the trip generations?
Yes, sir.
Your trip generation was two, was two in in the morning and three out at night. That's just that building. So multiply, you know, it's not going to be just two in the morning. It's going to be whatever was on the one that's already partially built, and then whatever was quoted on the other ones, which was a lot more than two, because they're what, at least twice the size, if not bigger.
And, and with all due respect, you are correct, and we accounted for the traffic associated with the one that's under construction as well as other ones that are planned.
And what did, what were your totals? Mr. DiSario, maybe you can explain that you're, you're not assessing to, what you're assessing totals of is the movements coming in and out of your site. But what you assess in your traffic report is level of service, and maybe you can just speak to the intersections that were studied. Those intersections with studied with existing traffic as well as future growths and what those level of services are.
Certainly. As the board engineer has said, we studied traffic based on existing volumes, increased background growth, not associated with any specific development, but just overall regional growth. And then all the warehouses, so the rock-solid one that's under construction, another one that's planned along Fairfield Road, the P S and G facility that is now fully open and operational, as well as the warehouse that's proposed before you this evening. Our study area extended from the Park Avenue intersection to the north all the way down to the intersection with Fairfield and Adelphia Farmingdale Road. And we looked at all the intersections in between those two points. And what we concluded is that all of those intersections operate efficiently, certainly within acceptable levels of service and operations. And more specifically, and, and really that's what is under the purview of this board, is the proposed driveways for this facility along Fairfield Road. Those driveways will operate at levels of service D or better, which is certainly in keeping with what's expected for those types of driveways and this proposed warehouse.
I just think, and it is a major concern for my neighbors and myself, that we are just going to have so much traffic on Fairfield Road that you're, it's just not something that we're going to be prepared for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Richard Schultz. I don't know where he went, so I'm going to go to Sherry.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yeah.
Please state and spell your name and provide us with your address.
My name is Sherry Reavis, S H E R I, R E A V I S. My address is three Hearth Court, County, New Jersey.
Please proceed.
My comment for this application is for the board in regard to the applicant not providing updated document for the public board and the professionals to review prior to voting. And I'm also concerned about the approval of this application and any other application this evening. At a meeting that I do not believe conforms to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, I am requesting that I be allowed to speak my full comment. I'm making this comment in, um, with the following people in mind. The person who commented, like, two or three people before me, that was very clear that it was hard for her to operate the phone to get onto the Zoom meeting and almost missed the opportunity to comment as well as the eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one Powell residents who are over the age of sixty-five and the two thousand six hundred and twenty-three residents of Powell that live in poverty. This is over twenty percent of the adult to reside in Powell. And the reason why I reference this twenty percent is because I imagine that while most people in Powell have a computer access to the internet. And the reason why I reference this twenty percent is because I imagine that while most people in how have a computer access to the internet. And know how or can figure out how to use Zoom. This is not a question. This isn't. True about all people in how. And planning board meetings are to be open to all members of the public. Regardless of their financial means, their limited exposure to computers, the internet. Virtual platforms or any of their self-proclaimed inability to understand technology as we've seen in other meetings where. I can remember one senior citizen saying. If somebody could please give her a lesson on Zoom. I commend the planning board for moving back to in-person meetings. However, I'm not clear why the date of June first was chosen. And why a federal guidelines were referenced in this explanation. From my understanding how township's been used. Utilizing information from the state of New Jersey regarding COVID decision-making, but it's interesting that for this one decision, federal guidelines are being used. That's that's confusing to me as a resident. How council meetings returned in person in May of twenty twenty-one. That was twenty-two months ago. For twenty-two months, there's been residents of Powell who've been excluded from planning board meetings. And it's my understanding that the board is required to give ten days notice for a meeting change. If that's true, then the next planning board meeting can be in person. The dates and times of the meetings are not changing. The board and its professionals will have two weeks to make arrangements to be able to drive from their homes. Or their offices to the Howell Municipal Building for the meeting. Is the date of June first made for the benefit of applicants? If so, I question who the board is working for. In the August sixteenth twenty twenty-two letter from the board's attorney to the planning members. It references. Many things, but I'll just jump to the conclusion. In conclusion, it's our opinion that the planning board and or zoning board of adjustment. They continue to conduct its meetings remotely as long as in doing so, the board adheres to the requirements and purposes. Of the municipal land use law and Open Public Meetings Act. To assure the right of the public to be present at all meetings of public bodies and to witness. In full detail, all phases of the deliberation. Policy formation and decision-making of the public bodies, along with the ability of the public. To actively participate in the hearing process are preserved and are made available to the public. The right of the public to be present at all meetings, witnessed in full detail. And the ability of the public to actively participate in the hearing process. I am referencing this because during this meeting. There's a conversation about. A document not being provided to the public or to the board and. I am asking that the board's solution not be that the application is voted on. And afterwards, the document will be reviewed and if there's a problem with the document. Then we'll go back and have the applicant come back. All information is to be provided to the board and to the public. We should be able to review that document and then be able to actively participate in the process with that updated document. The planning board. Any member of the planning board. Who. Is aware that the. Meeting is not conforming to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. And I'm gonna just say for those of you that are new, this is something that I just learned. The part of the act says that. It includes that if any person knowingly violates any sections of this act, they shall be fined. It requires that if any board member believes that a meeting is being held in violation of. This act, they must immediately state that at this meeting together with specific reasons for their belief and shall it shall be recorded in the me. Minutes of the meeting. So this board has the opportunity to. Complete the corrective action that I understood that I heard at the beginning of the meeting that you were making. Which is returning the meetings back to in person. I do not understand why the next meeting of the planning board cannot be in person.
Mister Chairman, if I could.
I.
This is really limited. And a comment as it relates to the application, I think her point is noted, we.
I was just trying to give her the opportunity. I I don't.
I appreciate that.
So if you could.
Yes, so regarding the current applicant, my request to the board is that we provide the documentation and allow the board. And the public to review it and to hold off on voting on the application and so all documents are reviewed. And that the next planning board be meeting be in person and that the planning board request from the council. The equipment to do hybrid meetings, as I think everyone would agree would be the best solution so that more people can participate.
Thank you.
I have Steve Morlino.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this meeting shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yes, absolutely.
Please state, state and spell your name and provide us with your address.
My name is Steve Morlino, S T E V E. M O R L I N O. Peachstone Road, Howell, New Jersey, thirty-eight years.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, I have to agree with Sherry that just spoke completely with her assessment of the fact that these meetings held virtually. Are inconvenience and a absolute. Ability for the public not to be assembled properly. Okay, people cannot be heard properly. People have been. Logged off of this Zoom meeting. There's no way for us to see who's on the meeting.
The very limited. We understand. We're not gonna rehash this part, so if you have any questions for the.
I have questions, Paul, absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
One of my questions is how many school buses show up in your study on Fairfield Road? Traveling Fairfield Road across Route thirty-three.
Dan, that's to you.
I I I know. Just give me a moment, please. I don't have an exact number. But I can tell you that our traffic counts were done six to ten in the morning and two to six in. The afternoon and evening to capture school activity.
And on what day of the week was this done?
Tuesday.
What month, what what day?
October fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. So you you can't tell me tonight how many buses actually. Go up and down Fairfield Road on a daily basis?
I cannot without actually going into the counts and reviewing the video.
Okay, I have a concern about how many buses. Go up and down Fairfield Road. How many children are on these buses? I have to point out that we had a death on Fairfield Road. A woman was T-boned coming out of her driveway. On Fairfield Road. Okay, right near this location. I travel on this road many times. It's a very narrow road. I understand you might be widening it. Over by the warehouse areas, but it's a very narrow road to begin with. There's a lot of traffic on the road already. Okay, now you're saying we're putting up additional signage. That's great. Signage is great. Does the township have the ability to enforce the signage? Because I see tractor trailers all over Howell on Aldridge Road, on Windler Road, on Oak Glen Road.
Respectfully, there's no restriction on tractor trailers on those roads. So this was a direct comment and concern about Bennett Road. And so the comment, which has now been kind of morphed into something different, was coordinate with the township regarding signage. About Bennett Road. We're not talking about putting their tractor trailers are allowed to drive on public roads. So if there's like Aldridge Road, there's no restriction. So and quite honestly, not even close to here. So. Can we focus what we're talking about to here, please?
My point and focus is about tractor trailer traffic in general, okay, and certainly on Fairfield Road. However, when Fast Forward was built, I don't know if you were around, that was twenty some odd years ago. It was told to us, the residents in the neighborhood around Fast Forward, that those warehouse tractor trailers would go up five twenty-four. Those tractor trailers continue, uh, five forty-seven, I'm sorry. They continue to travel on local roads all the time, every day. Okay, and they were restricted from doing that. However. Again, in this case, the same as in that case, the township does not have the ability to enforce these things. The gentleman said the traffic will be going up thirty-three. There's no guarantee that that's gonna happen. That's one of my concerns. Let me ask you another question. Has there been any environmental impact study in regard to the number of diesel trucks? In this township, especially in this area where you're gonna have four warehouses. And you don't even know who the tenants are. So who, do we know who the tenants are? First answer my question, is there anything about the air quality been done? Study wise, as far as all the diesel emissions in that neighborhood?
No, there's been no. Study as to air quality in. In the area, nor is one required. With and just to address some of the other questions with respect to. Enforcement, I'm not sure. I'm not aware of the other application referring to. Our specifically has a no right turn. Sign. On our property and as I'm sure as part of any conditional approval, there'd be Title thirty-nine enforcement. Therefore, if a truck makes an illegal right turn. Out of our building, they can be pulled over. Same thing if they drive on Bennett Road, if it's labeled, there's a weight limit and we're on that. As to the. Other roads you're referring to as part of this other project, I can't speak as to what they're doing and. What's permitted, what's not permitted, but I can tell you with respect to our project. Not only as our traffic engineer testified to that. Fundamentally, going to thirty-three is the best route for the tractor trailer. There's gonna be additional signage that says you can't make a right turn. You have to go towards thirty-three.
Understood. That's all well and good, but again, if it's not enforceable, if there's. It may be legally enforceable. My point is. We don't have the resources in Howell Township for a police officer to sit there and enforce this. Okay, that's my concern and we have a lot of school buses that go up and down that road and my concern is for the safety of children. And that some truck driver. Who may not be able to understand the signage or may disregard the signage, may create traffic hazards on that road. And that's the point I wanna put on the record. So I would appreciate knowing. How many school buses go up and down that road every day? I think that should be considered by the board. Okay, that's a major concern, safety of children, safe routes to schools of federal law. I'd like to hear something about that.
Mister Chairman, if I could, and the board has heard this many times. I know Ron's not here. Ron would typically chime in on this. This is a permitted use. The the applicant's burden of proof or what the board is evaluating is safety of site ingress and egress, not off-site impacts. This is limited to this site. It is a permitted use and we are focused on the safety of ingress and egress.
Maybe we should open our horizons and look at the safety of everybody concerned.
We're bound by the MLUL and so while I'm happy to hear what you have to say, what Laura is saying is what our charge is.
I understand.
We couldn't.
Charges, but I wanna go on the record and tell you what my opinion is. And my question is. How many school buses go up and down the road that may be impacted by? This additional traffic and to remind the board that there's been a death on that road. A woman that lived there was T-boned coming out of her driveway on that road. So there were problems with that road prior to warehouses being put there. And that's all I have to say this evening. So I wish you all well and I hope your conscious votes accordingly.
And just a reminder too that there is widening, road widening improvements happening on Fairfield Road as well as part of these applications.
Do we have any? Anybody else?
No one else with their hand raised.
Would you like to summarize?
You wanna close the public first?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, close the public.
Thank you.
Is it appropriate time for my summation?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you'd like to summarize.
Sure. You know, so briefly, we thank the board for their time this evening and the witnesses you heard this evening and we also. You appreciate some of the feedback we heard from the board members and even of the public. You know, as we indicated, the application is a fully conforming application. We did have those three items. Excuse me, with respect to the lighting plan, the landscape docked area and the alternative architecture plan. Where we can conform, but we have alternative plans that we believe are better. Suited for the property from a lighting perspective, from the landscape docked area and not having the landscaping there, which miss. Being indicated would probably just, you know, die and be a maintenance issue. And then from the architectural plan. Though the the one was, you know, in strict conformity with it, the alternative one meets the intent and purpose of it and is a better looking plan. I believe the testimony. Even from your own professionals were the alternative plans were better and we would ask that the board approve our alternative plans. As to the E I S, we've agreed. As to board member Hunter's comment as to the arsenic that will do an additional sample. And as to the arsenic and provide that information to the board, confirming that it's below. You know, the appropriate levels. As to the E I S document itself. We've agreed as conditional approval to provide the twenty twenty-two one that does reference the. The twenty twenty-one Howell Township Environmental Inventory Element. Again, the testimony was, there was no change. So the board has the document. The only change was updating the citation. Of what they reviewed and considered in their conclusions with the E I S. So to say that the board doesn't have the information is not accurate. They have the information. All the analysis and conclusions are the same. All the change was is the reference to make sure it's current as to. That environmental inventory element. So with that, we feel we've met the proofs. This is a fully conforming application. We provided the appropriate testimony supporting. The waivers in connection with the alternative plans and we asked that the board vote in favor.
Um, so. Before. I take a motion. Louis, I guess then what we're gonna do. In the. I guess we have to decide. Jen, your your comments, you you said no to the landscaping, right?
I think that person, like professionally, my recommendation is this, that we grant the waiver for the foundation planting. Only along the facade under the loading docks because it makes no sense. It will not survive. I also recommend granting the waiver for the lighting and having them comply with the the I E S standard, which is what we've been doing consistently.
Yes.
And I obviously we grant though, I would recommend granting the waiver, allowing. Pre-fund, you know, because they're gonna have to do that. And. Lastly, and you know how critical I am of the architecture. I recommend that we grant the waiver from strict compliance with the architecture. And that the what was presented as a twelve, which is the alternative architecture. Be approved because I think it's a better aesthetic design than strict compliance. That's my. Well, I do recommend those four waivers. I think what they're proposing is consistent with what we've done in the past and. Is a better alternative than strict compliance. Not to say Craig, you have identified that you would comply with all of these things. If you guys didn't like it, so it's not that they can't do it.
Correct.
This is a better alternative. That's my professional opinion.
So does anybody on the board have any objections to any of those? Those particular waivers that. Jen just spoke up on. Okay, then also too, then Louis, we just have to make sure that in, you know, if they get preliminary and final. That. You know, in there, we have that. You know, the additional sample.
Additional.
Yep, the additional arsenic samples. And also the document. They have to provide that. So we'll just make sure I guess everything, all that would be in a resolution if.
That's correct. That's correct. And the. For the impart environmental impact study, if there's any. Variation between what the report that you have says and what the updated report says that they would have to come back before the board.
Right.
And then we're also gonna just put in tile for thirty-nine enforcement.
Yes.
Quick question, what if the supplemental site investigation results are above standard of the.
They're gonna have, then they have to come back.
You gotta come back.
Have to come back and provide us with an explanation on how they're gonna plan on remedying that issue.
And that would also. Be open.
Yeah, and that also trigger, you know, remediation requirements at the D P level.
Okay. All right, so with that, then I will.
I may, I'm I am concerned about the environmental.
I may, I, I'm, I am concerned about the environmental specifically being arsenic. Um, you know, and I know there's correct verbiage. So I, I would, you know, defer to Louis to say, you know, how do we do that correctly?
That, that they have to do all their testing in accordance with the requirements of the Department of Environmental Protection. And they have very, very strict and very, very detailed standards on how it has to be done.
I, I really would, especially something like arsenic, that needs to come back to us. We need to understand that it's correct.
Well Craig, can you expedite that? Like get that done? Should the board act in the affirmative? Can you get that done like tomorrow? So that we can, you know, as soon as possible and get the result. I mean, listen, I know that the lab can only work as fast as it can work, but you can submit the sample quickly and then get it back to us as soon as possible. Because quite honestly, you know, if, if you act, if the board acts in the affirmative, it's gonna be a reso compliance issue. So you can't move forward without it anyway. They can't do anything without it, right? So they're gonna have to go through the process, get the sampling done, get it tested, submit it back to us. I would also ask Nick, do you feel comfortable? Would you want it to be submitted back to the Environmental Commission as well?
Uh, no, I'd be fine here.
Okay, so then just submit it back to us. We'll review it. Laura's office has a gigantic environmental department to look at that kind of stuff. And then if we have any concerns or issues, they're gonna have to come back and deal with it.
Yeah, though, though I'm not the one that'll be digging the sample or doing the testing.
No, that I get, but yeah.
We'll definitely, we have him on the audio, or he, we have him on the Zoom and they're, they're, they're aware this needs to get done ASAP.
And it's gotta be certainly be in the area where the, the first sample was taken.
Mm-hmm.
In accordance with all D E P requirements and protocols.
Right, okay. All right, then I will uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion for approval and I will will go on the professionals' recommendations on waivers and conditional approval when those documents get received.
Conditioned approval conditioned upon the receiving of
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mister Cristiano?
Yes.
Mister Husser?
Yes.
Mister Seaman?
Yes.
Mister Kyle?
Yes.
Mister Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Bavai?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You have a good night. I'll leave, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Um, I'll text Brian.
Okay, thank you.
For the uh next one.
Okay, and before we take a recess, I noticed somebody named Mike has their hand raised. Mike, the public was open and closed prior to your hand raising. So we can't act on your comments at this point. The board's taking a recess. We'll be back at nine o'clock. At this point, the planning board will reconvene. And we have Jared Pape as the attorney.
Yeah, uh, up next is um case number S P one zero seven eight A, New Horizons Properties LLC. And that's the amended preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance.
Mister Pape, who do you need besides Stu Challoner and Scott Kennel?
That's all.
Okay.
May we proceed?
Yeah, somebody's got something going on in the background. And I don't know where Scott went. I tried to bring him into the meeting. There he is, you can start.
Thank you.
Um, hang on one sec. Uh, is Rob there?
Uh, oh. No.
It shows it on the list of panelists, but he's not on the, oh, oh, he's not back.
He's there, he's just not at his
The screen is back, but he's not there.
Yes.
Let's give him a minute.
Now he's back.
There we go. All right, gang's all here. We can rock them all now.
Uh, good evening, Mister Chair, Board Members. Uh, my name is Jared Pape. I am an attorney with the Law Firm of Highland Pape. And our firm has the privilege of representing the applicant, New Horizon Properties LLC. Before we begin the presentation, I would like to ask either Ms. Rubano or Mister Carp if they could confirm that the notices that we provided for this application are adequate.
Yes, they were. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in the fall of twenty-twenty-one, this board adopted a resolution granting preliminary and final site plan um with ancillary bulk variance relief for this property. Uh, if you have been by the site recently, you will have seen that the project is under construction and progressing nicely. Um, when the preliminary and final site plan approval was approved back in the fall of twenty-twenty-one, our client had identified that one of the tenants would be Dollar General and that they were actively marketing for the additional tenant spaces. Um, they currently have an offer to lease a portion of the property from Centra State Hospital uh for two separate, there'd be two separate components, a physical therapy office and a family practice. So the applicant this evening is seeking an amended site plan approval to permit the proposed medical use on the property and specifically for a design waiver as it relates to the parking requirement on the property. The two witnesses this evening are Mister Challoner, who's the um applicant's design engineer. I intend to ask him one question, which is just to confirm that there are no physical changes to the site plan. And the second witness would be Scott Kennel to provide his parking analysis and to render his opinion as a traffic expert that the proposed parking is adequate to accommodate um the, the medical use and other uses on the site. Um, so with that, if we could have Mister Challoner first sworn in.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth unto penalties of perjury?
I do, yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name and provide your address.
My name is Stuart Challoner, last name C H A L L O N E R. My address is two zero one Main Street, Tomsover, New Jersey.
Please, please. Mister Challoner, could you please provide your um professional credentials for the board?
Uh, I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree from Merrimack College in Massachusetts. I've been practicing in my own business since nineteen ninety-five. I've appeared in front of this board several times and I prepared the application that was previously submitted.
Is your license current? Is your license current?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Will accept your credentials.
Thank you. Mister Challoner, I, as I mentioned, I really only have one question for you and it's could you confirm that there are no physical changes to the site plan or the structure that's proposed on the property?
That is correct. All the exterior uh features will remain exactly as approved.
Thank you. That, that's all I have of Mister Challoner unless there's any questions from the board.
Anybody? Okay.
Are you gonna, I just have a question. Are you gonna provide any testimony regarding operations of this new tenant?
Uh it, it's good, it was our intention that the operations was gonna be handled through the traffic engineer. Uh, through some specific
I, I, I'm not specifically addressing that to you, Stu. I'm, I'm, I just was asking in general, like, so is it
Yes.
Who is?
Yes. Well, it, it'll be covered in, in Mister Kennel's traffic testimony.
And like the number of employees and stuff like that?
Correct, we have that information.
Okay.
We could have Mister Kennel sworn.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth unto penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name and provide your address.
Yes, it's Scott Kennel, K E N N E L with McDonough and Ray Associates located at fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan. And, yeah, again, I have appeared before this board uh many times. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates with over thirty-five years of traffic transportation planning experience. I've prepared over two hun- two thousand traffic impact studies. I've testified in over two thousand site plan applications for both the public sector and the private sector. And um as I, as I mentioned, I've uh appeared before this board as well as the Howl Zoning Board on many occasions.
Thank you. Mister Kennel, I'm gonna ask if you could go through your parking analysis and ultimately um the basis for your opinion that the proposed parking is adequate to accommodate the medical components. I know part of your analysis included um some of the operations of the proposed medical uses. So just to be responsive to Miss Beam, perhaps you could begin with some of the overall operations.
Um, right.
Medical uses.
And if, if, if we could, I think it'll be helpful that if we can have the site plan Stu, that just, that we submitted that identifies where the medical space is proposed. Okay, thank you, Stu. Uh, yes, my office prepared a, a parking analysis dated November twenty-second twenty-twenty-two that was submitted as part of this application. And for the board members' benefit, this was approved previously. It's uh, the size of the site is approximately twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet. And we're providing a hundred and forty-one parking spaces at a um parking rate of five point four, five point four or five spaces per one thousand square feet. Centra State is, intends to occupy uh the western portion of the L-shaped building. And they're looking to lease approximately six thousand four hundred and forty-nine square feet. There are two practices that are proposed as part of uh them occupying that space. A third of the space would be occupied by a physical uh therapy operation that would have two employees. And the, the remainder of the space would be by, for a family practice that would have approximately fourteen employees. Centra State has indicated that this space would operate Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM. And everything would be by appointments. At this time, they, they uh do not intend to be operational on Saturday, but uh that could change as uh time goes on. Uh
God, I mean, if that's gonna change as time goes on, you do realize that you're gonna have to come back if that happens, right?
Well.
I mean, you're testifying that it's Monday through Friday, eight to six. If it's Monday through Saturday, eight to six, then say that.
Okay, well, what they've conveyed to us is it's right now, they're, they're they're, they're looking to do Monday through Friday. I mean, I guess, I guess they like that out option. And in my net, my assessment is, is based if they're open on Saturday. But I, again, I'm just conveying what the
Mister Kennel, does, does, does opening up on Saturday have any, any issues with any of the traffic testimony you're gonna provide?
It does not.
Okay.
Okay, so then I would just say Monday through Saturday then.
Okay.
If they open less, that's great, but if you're gonna commit to it and then you're gonna expand that, that's problematic. So take the most conservative situation, say Monday through Saturday. If your traffic assessment evaluated that, then let's use that and move on.
Okay. Uh, if we consider the municipal ordinance for medical space, which is one space per hundred and fifty square feet, that would require approximately forty-three spaces. Uh, given the location of, of the medical space on the site, um, in my opinion, there's more than adequate parking available. Uh, it's important to note that a the, I guess the, the anchor for lack of a better term, or the significant tenant on this site will be the Dollar General. Dollar General generally has a lower, low parking rate or demand based as compared to other retail uses. And based on I T E data, uh, that's um ninety-one hundred square feet would have a demand of approximately twenty vehicles, whereas based on the ordinance, we're providing approximately fifty spaces. So again, the, the uh, the benefit of having a multi-tenant um commercial use or site is that there's the dynamics of the uh different uses and how they peak. For example, medical office space has their um highest peak during the middle part of, mid part of the day. Whereas retail is generally towards late afternoon, early evening. Uh, provided in our, our, our parking analysis data collected by I T E. And based on I T E data, considering the eighty-fifth percentile uh data they collected, uh the approximately nineteen thousand square feet of retail space would have a demand of seventy-four spaces. The medical would have a demand of approximately thirty spaces or approximately a hundred and four. So you utilizing the I T data with the eighty-fifth percentile uh data they had collected, we're showing a hundred and four spaces where we have a hundred and forty-one. And then when you take in consideration, the, the dynamics of the different uses having different peaks, non-coincidental, it, it is um my opinion that the hundred and forty-one spaces proposed for this site with the medical office space would be more than adequate to support the demand. Uh, the one other element I want to add here, which will have a slight adjustment to the site plan as presented by Mister Challoner, is the, a, a review of the ADA regulations as it deals with physical therapy. They state that twenty percent of the spaces for physical therapy use need to have uh uh three handicap parking spaces, one of them van accessible. We have two spaces right adjacent to the medical office space and we can add uh along the frontage of the medical office space, two additional um handicap parking spaces which are located, and, and Stu, I don't know if you can put your cursor on there, at an area where we already have a handicap handicap um access to the sidewalk which can accommodate restriping those two spaces on either side of that access aisle is handicapped. So with that, we would be complying with the ADA regulations when considering the physical therapy use on the site. That, that concludes my testimony.
But you've yet to say that you require a hundred and seventy-three parking spaces by ordinance and you're at a hundred and forty-one. Like, it's all well and good for you to use I T E, but like, we actually have ordinance requirements for this. And the requirement is a hundred and seventy-three spaces. So you're thirty-two spaces short of our ordinance requirement.
Which is less than the, which uh, we would still comply with the waiver provision of twenty percent less than what was required.
Provision allowing you to be twenty percent less than is required. You need a waiver for being short thirty-two spaces. There's a waiver provision that allows for that. You need
Allows up to twenty percent, as I understand it, which would have it at thirty-five spaces.
God. You need a hundred and seventy-three, you're at a hundred and forty-one.
Well.
You need a waiver. There's nothing in our ordinance that allows you to get that, if that deviation.
Well, they recognize that as, as I understand, as a design waiver when you're within twenty percent.
Which is why I said it's a waiver.
Okay.
Nothing that allows for the waiver. You still need to seek the waiver.
Okay.
So let's be, let's, and you've been to this board enough to know that, to be perfectly honest. So I just want the board to be aware that there, the requirement for this space, now that you've added the medical use and the balance of it is retail, is a hundred and seventy-three parking spaces. That's what our ordinance requires.
That is, and I agree with that, that, that's what the ordinance requires. But it's my testimony that based on my experience, my firm's experience in review of I T E data, that the hundred and forty-one parking spaces will be more than adequate to support the uh, this development. And considering that we have um different types of use different types of uses that have non-coincidental peak parking periods. So based on that, it's my opinion that the one hundred and forty-one spaces will, will be adequate to support this development with the inclusion of medical office space.
Again.
Yes.
When, was this, was this? This and another property in the area, uh, I believe had parking issues that I can't recall. So bring me down memory lane.
Well, this, this.
Were they in compliance?
This was the gas station.
This was the gas station. And if this, was this the one? Let me phrase it a different way. If, if it stayed all retail, or are we in compliance with our parking ordinance?
Not as your ordinance is written. This is.
Correct.
This, there's two, there's two different.
Mr. Tannenhouse, stop.
Yeah.
Mr. Tannenhouse finishes question.
I'm sorry.
So, so Jen, this, this property, this project was always deficient in parking.
It was, but when you introduce medical office, that parking demand is higher.
Okay, well, what's the differential?
It's one for two fifty versus one for one fifty.
Uh, just in the numbers, we needed one seventy-two, we've got one forty. What was the original? I mean, are we only like shy by ten?
Original application required one hundred and forty-four parking spaces and they provided one hundred and forty-one.
Okay, so it was three parking spaces shy in the original application.
But they originally, I believe, applied this as a shopping center. And I think what's happening is this is no longer, or even at the time, I think it was likely a stretch, but that's how that was pitched to the board in the original application, was that this was a shopping center. Currently, with the breakout, it is not a shopping center, and I would defer to Jen for the definition in our code.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a retail center. It's not a shopping center.
And if I, if I may, basically, as Laura stated, this should have been considered as the retail center on the original application. So basically, as a retail center, that parking standard is one space for one hundred and fifty square feet. So again, based on the town ordinance, one hundred and seventy-three spaces would be required with or without the, the medical office space. Because it's the same, it's the same parking sta- rate for whether it's medical office or whether it's as a retail strip center. At one per one fifty.
Ms. Beam?
Yeah.
Have you or Laura been out to the site since construction has started?
I mean, it's really barely can start. It's been barely started.
Well, I know that the, the retention basin is installed and, and I believe the protection barrier is up last, I was up there a week or so ago.
I guess, my office is on site. We're currently inspecting this site.
And are, are you, are you, is your office comfortable that they're in compliance with the original resolution?
As it relates to the current construction, I mean, yes, there's nothing that they've done that's, that's deviated.
Okay, the split rail or the wood rail that's protecting the, around the, the detention basin is, is what we were expecting to see.
I, I mean, I, I can go back and double check, Brian, just to be hundred percent certain. I don't believe they've requested any field changes, so anything, when they go to get a C O would be consistent with the approved plans by the board.
Correct, that, that there's, the fencing around the basins has not been installed yet. What you, what, what you see from the road is the retaining wall system, the barrier between the development and the wetlands.
Uh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Jan, it's Joe. Uh, I have a question. Jen, in your professional opinion, is one hundred and forty-one spaces, is it adequate?
Yes. I just wanted to be clear for the record that they were asking for the relief from the hundred and seventy-three to the one forty-one. I don't think there's going to be a parking problem on the site, but I just wanted the record to be clear as to what they're required and what they're requesting.
Thank you.
We appreciate the clarification. We, that is the applicant's full presentation, full direct presentation. All the professionals are available if there's any further question. Hey, from the board? Okay, um, we'll open it up to the public.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up to members of the public that have questions or comments on this application only. Anyone who would like to ask questions or comment can use the raise your hand feature. If you're calling in, use star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself. You'll be brought into the hearing one at a time. Be sworn in and give your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, while we, I guess, initially open and raise their hand, I just want to confirm with Mr. Kennel, there are no changes to your D O T permit that's required?
That is correct. The, the traffic generation for retail is higher than medical office space, so we'll not change it. It remains intact.
Thank you.
And I have no one with their hand raised.
Alrighty, then I will close the public portion. Do you want to summarize? Um, we would just act, ask that the board act favorably on this request. Thank you. Then I will, uh.
What you're doing is that you're giving, you're, they're asking for an amendment to the site plan and a, uh, granting a waiver for the, uh, parking of one hundred and forty-one spaces, whereas one hundred, one hundred and seventy-three would be required.
Correct, yeah, correct. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the amendment and the waiver for the, uh, lack of parking.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yeah.
Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you to all. We appreciate your assistance. All right, have a good night. You too. All right, next up, case number S P one zero nine eight ninety Industrial Court LLC, final major site plan.
And this is Mr. Ken Pope.
Looks like my video is not working. Is my voice coming through, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I can hear you.
I apologize that I cannot get my camera working, but if you'll allow me to proceed with a voice, I'll, I would be, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
I thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals, Kenneth Pope, on behalf of your applicant, ninety industrial. This is an application for final site plan approval. We were before you on January nineteenth, just a few weeks ago, the board heard the application in its entirety and acted on a preliminary major site plan approval. There was a question that came up about the posted weight limit on Howell Road and whether that was, had an effect on this application. The applicant, the, the board indicated they would withhold final approval of the site plan pending addressing that issue. And that is the issue that we're prepared to address this evening. That one administrative issue before we go forward. And that is, if you could acknowledge receipt of our notices and confirmation that the board has jurisdiction.
Yes, the notice was in order. Thank you.
Thank you. The, uh, the issue that came up was the posting of a speed, of a weight limit on Howell Road. And the, although we felt that we had the answer that evening, we did not want to be shooting from the hip. Mr. Scott Kennel and his partner did the necessary research. And it is worth noting that by statute, weight restrictions on roadways do not apply to the deliveries and pickup of materials that are on the actual road with the weight limit. It's a through traffic restriction. And I'll allow Mr. Kennel to go through the statutory quote. But it's also worth noting that we're in an industrial park that has been developed over a number of years. The first warehouse that I did in that, where, in that area was approximately thirty years ago. And there's at least six warehouses that are in the industrial park where our building is located, including the one that our client currently operates from. And all of the truck activity from that industrial park has um, for at least that time period, been traveling on the same roadways. But if we could have Mr. Kennel sworn uh, for this matter, I'll ask that we, perhaps we don't have to hear his credentials again, um, but I'll defer to you, Mr. Chair, and to you, Mr. Carp. And we'll go right to that testimony.
Do you swear? Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth and the penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do. Scott Kennel, McDonough and Ray Associates.
And Mr. Kennel, you're the, you've testified on this application previously as the traffic engineer.
That's correct.
You're the same traffic engineer whose credentials were placed on the record twenty minutes ago, um, as, as a traffic expert.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, may we proceed?
Yes, please, yes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Kennel, your office did certain research and prepared a letter report dated February seventh, which was filed with the Howell Township Planning Board. Would you share with the board your findings?
Yeah, basically, our findings were is that there were, um, four-ton weight limits adopted, ordinances adopted for both Vanderweer Road and Howell Road. The, the ordinance that goes back to February nineteen ninety-one for Vanderweer Road speaks to the four, four-ton weight limit and, and states in there that pickup or delivery of materials on such treats, such streets are permitted. Generally based on my experience, when you have these four-ton weight limits there to prevent through traffic. In other words, just trucks utilizing, say, Howell Road from Route thirty-three to Adelphia Road as, as a means to say bypass Route nine or to go to other routes and, and self adopted truck routes. But the way the state statute is, and it, it's, it's specifically stated under N J S A forty colon sixty-seven dash sixteen point two that when there are weight limits adopted for a roadway, that there has to be the provision to allow uh, those businesses to be served by large vehicles that exceed the four-ton weight limit. So by state statute, also as it was adopted in, in the ordinance, uh, by Howell Township itself, by New Jersey statute, the industrial court warehouse, uh, buildings are allowed to have trucks in excess of four tons access those properties along Howell Road and along Vanderweer Road.
Which statute are you referring to?
The one, there's a state statute that talks about truck routes and then, which is N J S A forty colon sixty-seven dash sixteen point one, which refers to truck routes. And then there's another statute that follows that, that is forty colon sixty-seven sixteen point two that talk about accessibility to, um, commercial uses, even residential uses. It, it, it allows residential uses to have a delivery by a vehicle in excess of four tons to again, serve that entity, whether it's a business or a dwelling that located on roadways that have a weight restriction.
If I may just add to that, as everyone here is aware, industrial court, uh, off of Vanderweer, has been an industrial park for many years. I just indicated my experience with it was back at least thirty years. And this board in, uh, two years ago, adopted a resolution granting a major subdivision to create an industrial park. And the industrial park is the lot that we're presenting to you. So, um, I think that the clearly it has been understood and it has been the practice that industrial, these industrial uses in this industrial zone are allowed to have trucks that travel on that roadway, as long as it is, their destination is one of the properties in the industrial park. So I would ask that the board acknowledge, acknowledge that and that the applicant has addressed the concern that was raised during the public portion of the hearing on January nineteenth. That is the applicant's presentation on that point.
All right, does anybody from the board have any questions? So, all right, um, for this, we have to open it up to the public, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so can we do that, Eileen?
Sure. At this time, the chairman has opened this hearing up for members of the public to ask questions or comments on what was testified to this evening. Anyone having questions or comments can use the raise your hand feature. I'll bring you in one at a time. If you are calling in, use star nine to raise or lower your hand, star six to mute or unmute yourself. And I have Mr. Parisi.
Hi, good evening again.
Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth and the penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Please state your name, provide us with your address and spell your name.
Mark Parisi, M A R C P A R I S I, Two Castle Court.
Please proceed.
Okay, so just for clarification, uh, what the traffic expert just said, are we talking strictly about deliveries to the, this particular property on industrial court? Are we talking about trucks that are coming from the site in leaving, coming and going from the site, or just deliveries to the site?
Coming and going. It's deliveries and pickups is the language.
Okay, so there's a distinction between the, the business receiving a shipment and the business then having its own trucks that are coming and going from the business to, to other, you know, outside of the community. Because the, when, the, the way you read the statute, it makes it seem like, you know, a, a business or a residence is allowed to have a truck that exceeds a weight limit come to drop off something. So for example, like if I had, you know, uh, you know, a, a, an appliance delivered to my house, okay? Are you saying that the, the weight restriction doesn't apply to trucks that are owned by the business that come and go from the business on a daily basis?
I don't think ownership is, is even mentioned. It's, it's trucks that go to or leave the property are excluded. And that's been the way it's been applied to this industrial park. Appears to be the correct way and consistent with the, or the, of the, the statute and the language of the ordinance.
Well, if that's the position then of, of, of this applicant and of this planning board, then what was the purpose of imposing the weight restriction on the other application, uh, that the other warehouse application that was on Howell Road enforcing all the tractor trailers to use Oakerson and not being able to travel on Howell Road south to the thirty-three bypass west?
What, what happened in another application is not, uh, relevant here. We're only looking tonight at the application before the board, which is for, um, is, is for, uh, this.
Ninety industrial court.
For ninety industrial court, what every application is, is, is decided on its own merits and we can only look at what we did to, at this application tonight.
Yeah, but my, my comment is that it, it, to me, it seems as though there is an arbitrary enforcement of weight restrictions for one application and then an arbitrary argument to, to not enforce it for another application.
Every application stands on its own merits and tonight, we, we, for this application, we can only consider the merits or, or the issues related to this application and this location.
Okay, so then my next comment is going to be that this planning board adopted a circulation element in May of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, is it possible? Uh, is it possible that someone could pull that up onto their screen? Page six. I have it up on my screen. I can read it, or I didn't know if you guys wanted to pull it up so everyone.
Why don't you just read it? Why don't you just read it? Because by the time someone finds it, it's gonna, you know, like.
Alright, so, uh, on page six of the Howell Township Circulation Plan Element uh, that was adopted in May of two thousand twenty-two, it says Vanderweer Road seventeen, number seventeen. The following improvements should be evaluated. I, uh, remove weight restrictions from intersection with Howell Road to the north. J. Add signage to the area by Route thirty-three, quote, through traffic to thirty, to Route thirty-three in Industrial Court only, end quote. K. Encourage right-only turns from Industrial Court onto Vanderweer Road. Add a stipulation to future development applications. L. Look into capital improvement projects to improve the intersection with Howell Road. Right angle approach and improved sightlines. M. Discourage development inconsistent with existing zoning. Take no action to change zoning to more intense uses. So, what, I'm gonna speak directly to Mister Pape. I agree with you that they should be lifting the weight restriction from Industrial Court to Vanderweer North or to, towards Howell Road, and then lift the weight restriction from Vanderweer onto Howell Road North to thirty-three. I agree. I think that, you know, they, they should follow. The council should make those changes consistent with this circulation element. But my, I also feel that you were the, you represented another application that wanted to have their tractor trailers utilize Howell Road to get onto the thirty-three bypass west and. Oh, boy. Um, so, Mister Pape, do you, are, are you listening to me?
I am.
Yeah, I, I, listen, I, I'm with you on this one. I think that we could solve two problems with one issue here. And this is something that I wanted to talk about when we approved the last application, and I had my hand raised, and I, for whatever reason, I wasn't called on. And, and my comment to you tonight is this, let's, why don't we look at lifting those weight restrictions as is recommended in the circulation element for this particular application? But then, why don't you talk to your clients about coming back on an amended site plan approval and seeing if we can clean up the circulation for that other project, which I know is not before the board tonight, but I know you know exactly what I'm talking about. And utilize both Oakerson and Howell Road and have a better circulation at that particular project where the trucks don't only have to use.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, again, we're, we're talking about something that was a subject of a Whispering Woods hearing um, and was decided. Mister Parisi, please just focus. I, I know that you're trying to extrapolate between the two. Please just focus on this application. It seems like you agreed that there shouldn't be a weight restriction here. Can you just limit it? They're here tonight. They have a preliminary approval. They were brought back to the board to review the weight restrictions on Howell Road specifically. So, let's just focus on this.
Okay, well, I think I've made my comment, and ever, everyone understands what my, what my comment was, the point that I was driving home. That if it, you, you're gonna, you're gonna get the use of Vanderweer and Howell Road for this particular project, that it's worth reexamining other projects in this particular area. And that's the, that's the end of my comment.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
You can move me in as an attendee. Thank you.
I have Tom Tarranton.
Do you do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your name, and provide your address.
Uh, my name is Thomas Tarranton, and my address is eight oh nine Ocean Avenue, Abon, New Jersey.
Please proceed.
Um, I, I own the building next door at eighty-six Vanderweer Road. And, um, it's very interesting about the, uh, the weight restrictions because, um, the applicant and myself both get shipments and they will, we do exceed the weight limits on that road. So, it's been over thirty years within question about, you know, can we drive down to your building or not? And it's my, um, uh, doing business at that location because some truckers won't come down road because they see the signs. So, it would be really helpful to get clarification on what, you know, trucks that exceed the weight limits can come to my facility and unload and leave and go back.
That's a question for the town council to, to address, uh, as far as maybe modifying the signs or whatever. That's not within the jurisdiction of this board, but your, your comment is noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Candace Dovenero.
Hi, good evening.
Do you, first, we have to swear again. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter shall be the truth under penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your name and provide us with your address.
Candace Dovenero, D O V E N E E R O, um, fifty-eight Victory Road, Howell, New Jersey, zero seven seven three one.
Please proceed.
I just want to state that, that what's being heard tonight is like actually being part of like, it's past practice. Um, it's, it's also setting a precedence for the future. Um, it's also a conflict of interest. So, I know that even though the, the previous person stated some other things, there is a conflict. So, what is not good for one may not be good for all, but like if we're going to set a precedence, it should be good for all. So.
Candace, as we've said multiple times, every application stands on its own. There's no precedent in anything that we do here. So, everything is evaluated individually every time they come before us, which is why they do that. So, there is no precedent.
So, is there a favoritism, Jennifer?
There shouldn't be, no.
Yeah, I agree. So, but there is also like, um, pre-existing non-conforming. Um, there's also other things that we're like dealing with. And there's things that are being allowed in other projects that are not being allowed in future projects, which.
Which is why I'm saying every project gets evaluated individually, and the, the circumstances that are presented with each individual application is evaluated. And the determination of the board is based upon what's presented with that particular application. So, whatever happened in the past doesn't cut, like on another application, does not come into play here. They presented, they were asked, they got preliminary at the last time they were before us. Asked to look into the weight restrictions. Mister Kennel looked into the weight restrictions. They're back here about, you know, presenting to us what that means. And this application is gonna be based upon the facts associated with this case only.
Okay, is our board, um, checking on the facts that the applicant is putting forward to the board?
Has Mister Howard also sent us the same facts from the townships? Yes, we did.
And they're available to the public.
Yeah, public information, yeah.
Awesome. So, go ahead.
No.
I didn't want to interject. So, as long as I have that clear, I just want to make sure, like, going forward. I mean, Jennifer, you know I love you.
I know.
And you know, it's like nine forty-seven.
I understand, and, and I'm in a hotel room in Boston, so I feel you. Trust me.
God bless you. I wish you were in Florida, and I'm in hell. I gotta go to work in the morning. So, I love you all. Um, and thank you for your time, and I'm super sorry that this takes so long, but you know what? We need to make sure that our town stays Howell Township and not Howell City. We are not a city. We do not need, um, tractor trailers on every turn. I've seen accidents. I, I'm not gonna go into it. I'm not gonna babble. You all enjoy your night, but I can document all of it. Enjoy your night. Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Have a nice night, Candace.
You know.
I have no one else with their hand raised.
Mister Chair, I would only ask for a moment just to make a single responsive comment.
Please, Chair has to close it to the public first.
Nobody else? Alright, so nobody else in the public. I'm gonna close, uh, the public portion. Go ahead, Mister Pape.
Thank you. We're, I, we're not asking for any particularly special treatment at all. We're acknowledging that there is a, um, for, for many years, this past practice of heavy vehicles coming to this industrial park, and we're pointing out that by statute, that is permitted. And we're asking that you, that this, we, we made a promise to do that research and provide it to the board, not for special treatment, just so that we can continue to use the property in the industrial park the way all of the others in the, in the industrial park are doing so. So, thank you.
Anybody have any questions from the board? Okay, um, you want to sum, uh, summarize, Mister Pape?
Surely, Mister Chair, this is a, a request for a final site plan approval. All of the substantive presentation for the site plan was before the board in January. The board did approve the site plan. There are no changes to the site plan this evening. The board did direct that the applicant do the research, which we prevented, presented to you this evening. And we respectfully ask that the board conclude by voting on the final site plan consistent with the preliminary. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Mister Cristiano?
Yes.
Mister Husser?
Yes.
Mister Seaman?
Yes.
Mister Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mister Kyle?
Yes.
Mister Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Bava?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mister Chairman, members of board, thank you. And I am so impressed with the efficiency of this board this evening. Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you, Mister Pape.
Thank you, Mister Pape. Um, I do believe we have some info on the master plan subcommittee.
Yeah, Mister Chair, if I might, we're working on the farmland preservation element currently, which is a little different than our typical master plan elements because the process is about state and then further by the county. Um, we just received yesterday comments back from the state, which we're incorporating, uh, and we anticipate putting that forward to the subcommittee shortly thereafter. And then it will come before you for a public hearing in the next month.
Okay, awesome. Okay, I think that's all we have, right?
As of right now, yeah.
Okay.
I know there's other elements that are on the forefront, but we're waiting for the budget to, to be uh, dealt with at the governing body to assign some funds for further master plan activity. So, I know that there's some additional stuff that's on the forefront, but we're just not there yet.
Okay. Cool, good. Okay, uh, with that, uh, if we have any other business tonight, we don't, no executive, correct?
No.
No? Alright, then I will, go ahead.
Uh, I know, do we have three meetings in April, or is one just a placeholder?
No, we have two.
Yes, this thirteenth.
Thirteenth and twentieth, May we have three.
May we have three.
And one was a placeholder in case we went back uh, in person. We wouldn't be able to have the first meeting, so we kept two dates.
That's what I thought.
And we can discuss those.
Okay, enough said.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
Alrighty, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move, Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thanks, Eileen.